Tuesday, March 9th, Special Services District Meeting to Order. This meeting is also available on WHCI, West Hartford Community Interactive, Comcast Channel 5 and Frontier Channel 6098, as well as live streamed on www.whctv.org. And we'll start with roll call. Ms. LeBrow, happy birthday, girl.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Blank? Ms. Blank?
Here, present. Happy birthday.
Thank you, Ms. Cantor.
Here, happy birthday.
Mr. Davidoff?
Happy birthday, Ms. Clerk.
Thank you. Ms. Fay?
I'm here. Happy birthday to you, Essie.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Gold?
Present and following the trend, happy birthday.
Thank you. And Ms. Kerrigan?
Here, happy birthday. Can't imagine what a place to celebrate it.
Thank you. Later. Mr. Sweeney?
Here, happy birthday, Essie.
Thanks. Mr. Winograd?
Here, happy birthday.
Thank you. And Mr. Williams?
The 25th, Essie, here.
Oh, thank you. And we also have Ms. Rifkin. Ms. Rifkin, I see, are you on mute?
I am on mute. Sorry about that. I'm present. Happy birthday, Essie.
Thank you. And Mr. Carlson, the alternate, I see you're on here.
Happy birthday.
This is embarrassing. Mr. Moore-Pergo. I don't see Mr. Moore-Pergo, but Mr. Spivak is on. Mr. Spivak? Unmute, Mr. Spivak, please. Okay. He's on. Mr. Spivak, I see he's still on mute.
Madam Clerk, is Mr. Spivak the phone?
I believe so. It's either Mr. Spivak or Mr. Moore-Pergo.
Right, remember to press star six to unmute. Star six if you're on the phone.
Madam Clerk, I've sent them three requests so far.
Okay.
Maybe we can continue with the meeting. We can circle back to confirm. But star six again is an unmute, and you can just interrupt if need be. We'll make an exception for that.
We also have District Manager Hart on, and Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Privatera, and Deputy Corporation Counsel, Gina Verano.
Hey, thank you so much, Essie. Thanks, you, Madam Clerk.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now. Thank you. So you want to just get your name?
I was muted.
All right, thank you so much. Mr. Moore-Pergo. Okay, public forum. I note that the only agenda item on the presentation of the preliminary is of the preliminary budget for the fiscal year 2021, 2022 of the district manager, and this item is a will be subject to a public hearing, so it may not be addressed during the public forum of this meeting. So we will then go to 3A. Without objection, I move the meeting minutes. Sorry, there's all background noise. One minute. I'll just wait one minute. Okay, I'll just talk out. Sorry. Without objection, I move to approve the minutes from November 10th, 2020, District Board meeting. Are there any objections? All right, seeing none, the motion is adopted. Item number four, receipt of petitions, there are none. There is no consideration of the there's no consent calendar, there's no communications, there is no unfinished business, and we will now go to new business. And we will have a presentation of the budget for fiscal year 21, 22, the district manager for transmission to the West Hartford Town Clerk, and Mr. Hart, for you, for your presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chair and other members of the District Board. Matt Hart, District Manager. There are two funds that Mr. Privater and I would like to briefly review with you tonight that make up the proposed FY 21, 22 budget. The first is the Blueback Square Fund, which is used primarily to pay debt service on the parking garages and the other public improvements that the town established as part of the Blueback Square project. The second is the Special Services District Fund, which is used to make that transfer out for the debt service payment, and also to help support parking and other operations. You will see some changes from years past, and that has to do primarily with the impact of the pandemic on parking revenues. And Mayor, Madam Chair, I'd like to pause there, and through you, call upon Finance Director Peter Privatera to add a brief explanation to my overview.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Mr. Privatera?
Thank you. Good evening. Pete Privatera, Finance Director for the town. Today, I learned how to share files, so I'm going to try to share a file with you right now. Oh, great, it worked. Okay. Yeah. There are two budgets I want to go over. There's the BBS budget, Blueback Square budget. There's also the SSD budget. I just want to scroll down real quick to the SSD budget and look at that one first. As the as the town manager stated, there is some difference here with this budget. And the biggest difference, if you can see up in the right-hand corner, the parking revenue. Now, there are four income sources here. There's the district tax, which is pretty constant every year. There's the parking revenue, primarily from the garages, parking violation revenue, and interest income. And you can see, because of the pandemic, we've had a significant drop in the parking revenue. The estimate that we have for next year is slightly better than what we're projecting this year, but the estimate was generated by the parking manager and the DPW director, and we concur with that estimate. It's a very conservative estimate. If we were fortunate enough to gain more revenues, then I'll show you what the impact of that would be. But you can see the revenues of $3.6 million up on top. Now, if we look at the expenditure side, there's two transfers out that we normally execute. One is the parking operations to offset the portion of the operating costs associated with the garages in the district. And in the past, it's been significant. It's ranged from $750,000 to $950,000. You can see we have zero in for next year, meaning the transfer out, in our opinion, is only going to be sufficient enough to cover the debt service on the outstanding bonds. Now, I'm going to scroll up to the BBS budget. And you can see, on the BBS side, there are two revenue sources. One is a small rental of facilities amount that we get for a small piece of property in the district, and the other is the transfer in. Now, on the bottom, you can see the capital financing, which is, you know, $3.6 million, which is slightly greater than the transfer in. Now, fortunately, we had some fund balance left in the BBS fund, but that $3.6 million represents the debt service we have to pay next year in the bonds. What you don't see is the impact of this on the parking lot fund, which is showing a significant deficit for next year as well. But our primary responsibility is to pay the debt service on the existing bonds, and our hope is that as the pandemic loosens its grip and more people get vaccinated, parking will start to gradually return to the district, and we'll be able to recoup that deficit over time. And if we do collect more than we're expecting next fiscal year, that additional revenue over and above what we need to pay the debt service will go to offset the deficit in the parking lot fund. So I'll take any questions if anyone has any.
Thank you, Mr. Privatera. Are there questions from Mr. Privatera? And if I don't, I don't see everybody's, sorry, shuffling papers here, I don't see everybody's, the screen or box, Brady Boxer. If you have a question, please, please give me a little nudge. Okay. I don't hear any.
Counsel Winograd, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Winograd.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just, I suspect this question will be asked again at other times over the next few months. To what extent can we accept that the losses of parking is attributable to COVID and all? Can we fill with federal money or state money as reimbursement for the impact?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Winograd. That is the question of the day. Mr. Hart, I don't know if you want to take a stab at that.
Matt Hart, District Manager. Thank you for the question, Counsel Winograd. Don't have an exact answer to that question just yet. To date, we have not been able to receive any reimbursement for lost parking revenue under the coronavirus relief fund or through FEMA. They're not eligible for reimbursement. But under the American Rescue Plan, we will certainly look to see if that presents us with opportunities. Our understanding, our preliminary understanding right now, that legislation is much broader, and it is designed, there's a significant component, as you know, that will provide relief to local governments across the nation. And there's a component of that that is designed to help replace lost revenue at the municipal level.
Thank you, Mr. Winograd. Anything further? Okay. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Davidoff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To sort of follow up on Mr. Winograd's inquiry, where would we be getting the guidance as to the use of the American Rescue Plan funds that we're anticipated getting with respect to providing for coverage for lost revenue as was demonstrated in the parking fund?
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. Mr. Hart?
Matt Hart, District Manager. Thank you for the question, Deputy Mayor. We expect that Congress will certainly produce a set of rules, but here at the local level, we will also look for, at our State Municipal League, the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities to issue a set of guidelines or pass on whatever Congress produces with some more Connecticut-specific instructions to all of its members. So we're hoping we get something tomorrow, Thursday, at least, that's preliminary, but it's likely to take a little more time than that to get a complete set of instructions.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Mr. Davidoff, anything further?
One follow-up. So is the anticipation that we would receive this guidance prior to budget adoption?
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. Mr. Hart?
Matt Hart, District Manager. Yes, that is correct. That's our assumption, is that we'll receive it well prior to the adoption of the district budget, as well as the town's budget.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Mr. Davidoff, anything further?
Nothing further, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Hart? Or Mr. Privatera? Okay. I don't see any. Again, last, if you have a question, please let me know. Now? All right. With that, we will, without objection, then, I move the preliminary budget be set for public hearing on March 23rd, 2021, at 6:30 PM. Are there any objections? There being no objections, the motion is adopted. And I think we are, well, please note that the district will consider the adoption of the budget at a special meeting to be scheduled on April 22nd at 6:30 PM. The meeting originally scheduled for budget adoption on April 19th will be canceled. So make sure that you mark your calendars accordingly. That, I'll just repeat that. The district will consider adoption of the budget at a special meeting to be scheduled on April 22nd at 6:30 PM. The meeting originally scheduled for budget adoption on April 19th will be canceled. We have no consent calendar, no staff reports, right, Mr. Hart? No additional staff reports, correct? No executive session. Without objection, I make a motion that the meeting be adjourned. Any objections? There being no objections, the meeting is adjourned, and we will meet you back here in a few minutes, about 12 minutes for the, I think, right? Is the public hearing at 7? I don't have the time on here.
Yes, it's at 7.
Okay, 12 minutes.
I just want to say for council members, they can just stay on.
Right. Yeah, don't sign off, just if you want to mute and maybe grab a handful of peanuts or something. I don't know. I don't know.
This, good evening, I am Mayor Sherri Cantor, and I'd like to welcome you to tonight's On the application filed on behalf of Aldi Inc., owner of property located at 511 New Park Avenue, also known as West Hartford Place, located within Special Development The application seeks permission to amend the previously approved conditions of approval to eliminate the restriction which prohibits the sale of liquor within the SDD. Because in-person attendance of public meetings is likely to increase the risk of transmission of COVID-19, this hearing is being conducted virtually in accordance with Governor Lamont's Public Health Emergency and Civil Preparedness Orders. Before we begin, I would like to note that the required legal notice has been posted on the town's website and published in the Hartford Current. The application materials have been posted and are available for review on the town's website in accordance with the governor's executive orders. Madam Birthday Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Blank?
Present.
Ms. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Davidoff?
Here.
Ms. Fay?
Present.
Mr. Gold?
Here.
Ms. Kerrigan?
Here, birthday girl.
Mr. Swinney?
Here.
Mr. Winograd?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Brown. Only one more time, that will embarrass you. This is Mayor Cantor again. I would like to note that we have a full quorum of the council. Because of the virtual format of this hearing, there are some special rules and procedures that I would like to cover before we begin. I'd like to start with a brief overview of the process. Many of us have now been through this a number of times, but the applicant might not, so we're going to review it and someone tuned in might not as well. We will begin with a presentation by the applicant whose representatives are participating via video conference. The applicant will have 30 minutes to make its presentation if necessary. The applicant may request additional time at the end of, actually, that was supposed to be 20 minutes. At the end of the 20 minutes, if there's additional time necessary, then we will exercise discretion, and I can exercise my discretion as chair to grant additional time in five-minute increments. Following the presentation by the applicant, we will open the floor to members of the public who may participate by video or phone using WebEx. Instructions on how to participate can be found on the meeting notice that is posted on the town website, www.westhartfordct.gov, in the Government section under Meetings and Agendas. After public comment is over, the applicant may have the opportunity, or will have the opportunity, to respond to any comments that are made. Members of the council will then have an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant. I will call on members of the council in alphabetical order. Each member of the council will have five minutes to ask questions, which will include the time for the applicant to answer. If there's more time needed as chair, I will have the discretion to add additional time. With that, I invite the applicant to begin their presentation. Please state your name and, for your name for the record. Mr. Attorney Lewis Wise, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Now we can, thank you.
And I cannot seem to get my picture to show, so you may just have to listen to me.
Okay, go ahead, thank you.
Which is too bad, because I put on a clean shirt for this and everything. But in any event, my name is Lou Wise, and I am an attorney with the law firm of Roger Nassau in Hartford, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Aldi's. And with me from Aldi's is Bruno Lorenko, I see his name here, so he's here, and he's available to answer any questions you might have about the application. We are not going to take, I am not going to take 20 minutes. This may be the shortest presentation I've ever made in my career. Let me just tell you that, well, I'm sure you all know that Aldi's is a grocery store and it's located in the BJ's and Home Depot development on New Park Avenue. The town council approved the SDD for this development back in 1994. I don't know how many of you remember that, but I actually represented the developer and spent eight nights in public hearings before the council, one of the most hotly contested applications in town history. But in any event, it's turned out to be quite a success. When the town council approved the development back in 1994, it attached a condition to the approval which prohibited the sale of liquor within the SDD, any alcoholic beverages. Aldi is, as I said, is a grocery store which wants now to sell its own branded beer at this location. So by this application, Aldi's is seeking to amend the condition of approval so as to allow the sale of beer and, for that matter, any other alcoholic beverages that are allowed under a Liquor Control Commission grocery store beer permit. The grocery store permit not only allows the sale of beer, but also certain other alcoholic beverages such as seltzer and, I think, certain ciders, which all have a similar alcohol content, I guess, to beer, which is why they're lumped together under the grocery store permit. And needless to say, the grocery store permit is only available for grocery stores. And if you grant this application, Aldi will apply for the permit and begin to sell its own beer, which it's doing at its other locations. And just one more, I just wanted to add one more thing, which is that if it were not for this special condition, this special condition that was imposed at the time of the SDD approval, Aldi's would have had the right, like any other grocery store, to begin to sell beer at its location. Under your zoning regulations, and I'm referring to Section 177-36D, beer, the sale of, any, the sale of beer is permitted in any grocery store, subject to certain conditions having to do with distance from schools and places of worship and so forth, in any business district. And since the underlying district is a business district, Aldi's would be able to go ahead and sell the beer without having to go through the SDD process that we're going through now. So actually, you'll be allowing what is already permitted under the underlying regulations. And that's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Attorney Wise. That was a very quick presentation, no question, but if you average the two out, it didn't turn out so well. Anyway. So we will go to the public comment portion. We, so we will be, we're affording the public the opportunity, I don't know if there's anybody on, but you can either use WebEx or phone, and we will start that in a minute. In addition to the comment, to live comment, members of the public were invited to provide written comments. Any written comments we received were published on the town's website as a PDF and were embedded on the online agenda. All written comments, if any, were also provided to the council and the applicant for review. I'll ask, I'll just confirm with the clerk that we did not receive any written comment on this application.
Madam Mayor, there were no comments submitted to me by the public on this application.
Thank you very much. We will now open the floor for live comments from the public. Again, we have video and phone access. Instructions on how to participate by video may be found on the meeting notice on the town website, again, www.westhartfordct.gov, in the Government section under Meetings and Agendas. And for those who wish to comment by phone, I will give you the number slowly, 1-4-0-8-418-9388. Again, 4-0-8-418-9388. And you will need to enter an access code, which is 1-3-2-3-5-2-6-4-8-3. That again is 1-3-2-3-5-2-6-4-8-3. The moderator will be first to recognize any video participants and unmute one by one, and then we will go to phone participants, and you need to press star six to unmute your phone line. Out of respect for other people, again, I don't think we need to do that here, but we do have a three to five minute limit, but I don't think there's, I don't think we will have an issue. All speakers, please state your name and address for the record. Also, comments must be germane to the application. And finally, I think we're ready to go to public comment. Madam Moderator, is there anybody on video?
Madam Mayor, there are no callers or any on video at the moment.
Okay, so there is no public participation that you are aware of?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, then we will go to council questions, and we will, I will just, all I need you to say is, if you don't have any questions, is just, you know, pass, I'm good, whatever. But I am going to go through, because again, some of you are in and out, and I don't see everybody. We'll start with Counselor Blank.
Thank you, Mayor, through you. So I think my question is probably for Attorney Wise or perhaps the representative. And then a point of clarification, so the beer permit, you can sell beer, seltzer, and certain type of ciders. Does this also allow for wine coolers? And I'm going to just take the liberty to say this does not cover any type of hard alcohol.
Correct, it does not.
Actually, Attorney Wise needs to go through me through the chair, sorry about that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, Ms. Blank, and now over to Attorney Wise to answer the question.
I do not, I'm
please state your name and address for the record. Also, comments must be germane to the application. And finally, I think we're ready to go to public comment. Madam Moderator, is there anybody on video?
Madam Mayor, there are no callers or anyone on video at the moment.
Okay, so there is no public participation that you are aware of?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, then we will go to council questions, and we will -- I will just -- all I need you to say is, if you don't have any questions, is just, you know, pass, I'm good, whatever. But I am going to go through, because again, some of you are in and out, and I don't see everybody. We'll start with Councilor Blanks.
Thank you, Mayor, through you. So I think my question is probably for Attorney Wise, or perhaps the representative. And then a point of clarification. So the beer permit, you can sell beer, seltzer, and certain type of ciders. Does this also allow for wine coolers? And I'm going to just take the liberty to say this does not cover any type of hard alcohol.
Correct, it does not.
Miss, actually, Attorney Wise needs to go through me through the chair, sorry about that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, Ms. Blanks. And now over to Attorney Wise to answer the question.
I do not -- I'm certain that the grocery store beer permit does not allow the sale of hard alcohol.
Thank you, Mr. Wise. Clarify the other components of the -- that Ms. Blanks asked about, the seltzers, and that is included, correct?
Yes, correct.
All right, back to you, Ms. Blanks, anything?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Also, the clarification, Mr. Wise, wine cooler, is that included?
Thank you, Ms. Blanks.
To tell you the truth, I don't know. Bruno, do you have any idea?
Do not. We do not sell wine coolers, but I do not know.
Thank you, Bruno. Thank you, Mr. -- I mean, Attorney Wise. I guess we will have an -- we don't have an answer to that right now. I don't know if you can find one out before the end of the hearing, but I don't know if that makes a difference. Ms. Blanks, anything further?
I have a feeling that it does not include wine coolers, because I don't know that much about wine coolers, but I think the alcohol content is probably the same, similar to wine. And I know that wine is not included in a grocery -- under a grocery store permit.
Thank you, Attorney Wise. Anything further, Ms. Blanks? Thank you, thank you, Ms. Blanks. Mr. Davidoff?
Pass.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. Ms. Fay?
Through you, through you, Mayor Cantor. Yes, Attorney Wise, just, you know, I've been in other Aldi's stores, and I've seen what the liquor display looks like. It's beer, and it's got, I think it's got some seltzers, and it's got some cider. But can I assume that the setup in West Hartford is similar to your other stores in Connecticut?
Thank you, Ms. Fay. Attorney Wise?
I'm going to leave that one for Bruno.
Thank you.
It would be similar. It's about eight feet of shelving, about three-tier. It's just our private label brand that we typically carry, and then any special buy, which is any seasonal items.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Lorenko. And Attorney Wise, anything further, Ms. Fay?
No, thank you very much. I'll sit.
Thank you, Ms. Fay. Mr. Gold?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and through you, to Attorney Wise. Thank you very much for your brevity in presentation. Number one. Number two, I did have a question. Will there be a provisional permit application in this process, or is it going to wait until the full application has been approved?
Thank you, Mr. Gold. Attorney Wise?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Back to you, Mr. Gold. Can you clarify, Attorney Wise?
I will. The application itself, there's a provisional permit process when you apply for liquor permit. Maybe Bruno can answer that, unless you're helping with that process. Or is -- I think there's a 90-day provisional permit that goes through the statute. Is that something that is being sought after as well here, or is it just simply the beer permit itself?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Gold. Mr. Wise or Mr. Lorenko, I think you can just state your name, which whoever is going to answer that question. We'll start with Attorney Wise. I don't know if you have an answer.
Yeah, again, I'm going to turn that over to Bruno. He probably knows more about the process than I do.
To you.
Hi, Bruno Lorenko. Yes, you would, after we see the approval, we would start the process to actually receive the permit. That gets handled by administrative person in our office, but after we get the official okay from the town, we will start that process. So I think if you're asking, the store is currently being remodeled. We started construction February 15th or so. Whether we'll open with beer when we reopen the store in the end of May, I think that's our goal, and that's what we're shooting for. So we have some time to reopen, remodel the store, and then open with the beer display.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Lorenko. Mr. Gold, anything further? I'll sit. Okay.
I'll sit, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kerrigan?
Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor. I want to echo Councilor Gold's comment that appreciative of your brevity. Sometimes we've had presenters spend more time than we do in the entire council meeting, so I sincerely appreciate brevity. One question I do have is, initially, because I wasn't around in the '90s when it was approved, why was it excluded that you couldn't have a license to sell beer?
Thank you, Ms. Kerrigan. Attorney Wise?
I'm laughing, you can't see me, but first of all, you're asking me to remember something that occurred 26 years ago? I honestly don't remember why. It may have had to do with the underlying zoning regulations at the time. I don't know if Todd knows anything about that, but it may have been that that was inserted to come in, to comply with the local zoning requirements. But I really don't have any recollection. I don't believe it was something that was discussed by the council during its deliberations. It's just it was part of a lengthy list of conditions that were, you know, issued.
Thank you, Attorney Wise. Mr. Dumein, do you have any history on that, or no?
Madam Mayor, I do believe Mr. Wise is partially correct. The provision appears to have been inserted as a condition to address possibly what could have been perceived as a loophole. So our liquor ordinance restrictions locally, as Mr. Attorney Wise indicated earlier, prohibit the sale of liquor within proximity distance to parks and schools. This special development district falls across the street from the Charter Oak School and the Sterling Field Complex. However, the way you calculate that distance, you need to go out the center of the property's address point, out to the closest road, which is New Park Avenue. So while it's right across the street, it's several thousand feet by the way we calculate it. So I think it was more of a belt and suspenders at the time to avoid the issue.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Dumein. Ms. Kerrigan?
Oh, thank you. No, thank, I appreciate it. I just wanted to understand the history here. Thank you.
Interesting. That's always interesting, project on that, sort of reflect on that history. Mr. Sweeney?
I do not have any questions at this time. I just want to thank them for their investment in the town.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Mr. Wenigrad?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And to echo Mr. Sweeney just said, I gotta thank you for your application, and I'm looking forward to this. I do have one just note of clarification. As I understand it, right now, there's the rules about beer and similar drinks. The legislature is looking at allowing wine in supermarkets as well. Under this ordinance, or zoning change, if the state were to allow wine to be sold in supermarkets under that regular license, this would also apply to your store. Is that correct?
Thank you, Mr. Wenigrad. Attorney Wise?
If it were able to be sold pursuant to a grocery store permit, then yes, I guess it would be covered. But if it were not, if it was still under a different type of permit, then I think we'd have to come back and ask you to amend the regulation again.
Thank you.
Not the regulation, the condition of approval again.
Right. Thank you, thank you, Attorney Wise. Mr. Wenigrad?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And again, I'd like to avoid, even though we appreciate short meetings, I'd like to avoid making people go through the steps if it's not necessary. So certainly, we leave that up to the state if they decide to change the rules for supermarkets, and we don't want to have -- certainly, I don't want to have regulations that restrict more than that, certainly not knowingly. So thank you for that answer.
Thank you, Mr. Wenigrad. And I want to thank Mr. Wenigrad for raising the question prior to the last meeting to make sure that this change to the STD did accommodate that, consistent with other grocery stores. So thank you again for your forward thinking, Mr. Wenigrad. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the applicant. No questions.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. All right. So I also don't have any questions. I just want to again thank Aldi and Mr. Lorenko and Attorney Wise for the presentation, to the point presentation. I think complete, because it covered all the points. But I also, and for the investment, and we look forward to the Aldi redux and to having the brand, the brand that, you know, you're so, your own brand to share with the community. Before we close the public hearing, I would like to read into the record letters dated from TPZ, February 12, 2021, recommending approval, and from DRAF dated February 11, 2021, also recommending approval. If there is no objection, we will close the public hearing. Is there any objection? Seeing and hearing no objection, the public hearing is now closed, and we will start the council meeting in eight minutes. I will see you then. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Video's on. All right, we will call the Tuesday, March 9th, Town Council Meeting to Order. This meeting is available live on West Hartford Community Interactive, Comcast Channel 5, Frontier Channel 6098, YouTube, as well as www.whtctv.org. And any person who wishes to address the council during the public forum, we will -- I will give the number now, and then you can write it down if you're interested. Actually, I don't think there's really anything on the agenda, but the number's 408-418-9388. Again, 408-418-9388. Enter access code 132-352-6483. So again, meeting's called to order, and we will start with Pledge of Allegiance. And I have a new setup here because of internet issues, so I don't know. There is a flag over here, if you can see. So if you can stand, the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States and America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and do this vote with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, birthday girl.
Ms. Blanks?
Here.
Ms. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Davidoff?
Happy birthday, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Ms. Fay?
Here.
Mr. Gold?
Present.
Ms. Kerrigan?
Happy birthday. Yep, here.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney?
Happy birthday, S.A., here.
You guys are better than Facebook. Thank you. Mr. Wenigrad?
You guys are better than Facebook. Thank you. Mr. Wenegrad.
Here.
And Mr. Williams.
Birthday here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We feel terrible that you have to be here on your birthday, but we've all had to do it. Anyway, or anniversaries, or Valentine's Day, or all those kinds of things. Anyway, I'm going to start with remembering of an institution and when West Hartford, Raymond Shea. And I just want to say a couple of words about Ray, Ray Shea, as he is known. He passed away on Sunday, February 28th, 2021. He was a man of great faith and is now, and is now with his beloved wife Louise, who predeceased him in 2015. He was a well-known and admired firefighter, labor leader, mediator, arbitrator, knight, father, grandfather, brother, uncle, and friend to all. He blessed every person he met with a huge smile, and I actually have a picture from last paper of him. I don't know if you can see, but anybody that knew Ray knew his smile and his warmth. At age 90, he continued to work on the Labor Board and he did navigate his way with Zoom. He is an, he was an Army veteran, serving in the Korea, Korean War from 1952 to 1954. He then had a distinguished career as a lieutenant in the West Hartford Fire Department. It was there he began a lifetime advocacy for firefighters and union workers across the state of Connecticut. He served as the local union president and negotiated the first municipal contract for the firefighters in the town of West Hartford in 1966. In the years following, he served as president of the State Chapter of Uniformed Professional Firefighters Association and was delegate to the State Labor Council, AFL-CIO. He negotiated contracts for firefighters in every corner of the state. He will be widely remembered for his lobbying at the state legislator to pass Hart and Hypertension Law in 1977. And for the past 40 years, he has served as union arbitrator at the State Labor Board of Mediation and Arbitration. He also served as chair on the Muscular Dystrophy Association Drive, co-hosted annual Labor Day telethons for many years. And in adult life, he was deeply involved with the Church of St. Bridget and the Knights of Columbus. He touched so many lives and people that knew him really benefited from his dedication. He, his world revolved around his family. He was an Elmwood, Elmwood through and through. And he, you know, he just was such an integral part of this community. He leaves his children, Patty Shea, husband Peter Lovell of Milford, James Goodwin and wife Marcia of Newington, and Marie Tyrone and husband Robert of Texas, six grandchildren, and, and so many friends and colleagues and so much of this community that was touched by him. As well as five, I'm sorry, five great grandchildren as well. So we remember Ray and thank him for all that he did for our country and for our, our state and for our community. And thank you. And then we will now go to proclamations, two, this evening. And I'm grateful that they were enlarged this time, so I don't have to struggle quite so much. We'll start with one.
Resolve it in case.
I'm sorry?
Your camera is off.
Oh my goodness, sorry about that. I must have clicked it when I was switching papers. Sorry about that. This is Women's History Month, and yesterday was International Women's Day. So whereas women have influenced and advanced every facet of American life and culture, the strength, ingenuity, and spirit of our female leaders, innovators, and pioneers shape our nation's character, government, industry, families, and communities. During Women's History Month, we honor the women who have changed our nation and the world, and we affirm, reaffirm our commitment to supporting the next generation of female trailblazers and dreamers as they carry forward this distinguished legacy. Whereas throughout our history, women have also been pioneers in fields like science, medicine, and engineering. Women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of life and then, of the nation, and by constituting a significant portion of the labor force, working inside and outside of the home. Whereas in this country's time of crisis, women lead. Women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of battling this year's pandemic in the healthcare field, teaching our youth and caring for the elderly. And women have served our country courageously in the military, and they are making significant contributions in social change and environmental stewardship and justice. And whereas on March 8th each year, we celebrate the International Day of Women, and this year's theme of choose to challenge is to inspire women to challenge themselves to create new paths, challenge inequality, and strive for positive change for women around the world. And whereas the one, this year's theme of Women's History Month is again, the suffrage, centennial, valiant women of the vote, refusing to be silenced. West Hartford celebrates the important voice and vote of each and every woman. Now therefore be it proclaimed that on behalf of the town council and the residents of West Hartford, I, Mayor Sheri G. Cantor, do hereby recognize and celebrate the numerous contributions made by women and proclaim the month of, sorry, March 2021 as Women's History Month, and call upon all citizens to fight for equality and engage in programs, ceremonies, and active activities that honor and celebrate the history, achievements, and numerous contributions of women. And so, and the next proclamation is for Red Cross Month. And it has been particularly important, I think, during this, at times of crisis. Whereas March is Red Cross Month, a special time to honor the kindness of our neighbors who aid families in need every day in West Hartford, Connecticut, across the United States and around the world. Their dedication touches millions of lives each year as they carry out the organization's 140-year mission of preventing and alleviating suffering. And whereas we dedicate this month of March to all those who continue to advance the noble and compassionate legacy of American Cross co-founder Clara Barton, and we ask others to join in their commitment to care for people in need. And whereas the American Red Cross is a not-for-profit organization that depends on volunteers and generosity of the American public to perform its mission, this life, and this life-saving work is vital to strengthening our community's resilience. And whereas the American Red Cross shelters, feeds, and provides emotional support to victims of disasters, supplies life-saving blood, platelets, and convalescent plasma, teaches skills that save lives, provides international humanitarian aid, and supports military members and their families. And whereas the need for blood and platelet donations is constant, whether for traumatic accident victims, for cancer patients, or for research. And the town of West Hartford and the American Red Cross have partnered to meet the challenges of maintaining an adequate blood supply for those in need. And whereas the American Red Cross has never failed to answer call to assist West Hartford families in times of crisis, including residential fires, power failures, and other calamities, by providing immediate support for lodging, food, and recovery needs. Now therefore be proclaimed on behalf of the town council and the residents of West Hartford, I, Mayor Sheri G. Cantor, do hereby proclaim 20, March 2021 as Red Cross Month and encourage all citizens to reach out and support this humanitarian mission. And today, there was another blood drive at the town hall for the, for Red Cross and a lot of, and are actually a past mayor, I saw Rob Bouvier walking out after he donated blood today. And he said, "Thank you for doing this, and that means even more when you know so many people are in need." And so much of the supply had dropped and West Hartford really stepped forward. I also want to, for the Women's History Month, just mention that women really have suffered employment-wise from the COVID as well. There's a pretty stark numbers. And there will be work to do to make sure women have the support to get back in the workforce. So anyway, now we will go to public forum. Any resident or taxpayer of the town who wishes to address the council regarding any item on the agenda which is not otherwise subject to a public hearing, again, may call 408-418-9388. Ask access code at 1323526483. There is a virtual meet, this is a virtual meeting and we are operating under modified rules. As a reminder, for the sake of ease and efficiency, motions by the deputy mayor need not be seconded. And in many cases, we will continue to vote on routine items by unanimous consent. However, all other motions such as floor amendments must be seconded when required under Robert's rules. There are also some motions that we may vote on by voice. When we do so, I ask all councillors to make sure their video is on and visibly raise their hand when they say aye and nay, so the clerk can get an accurate count. With that, would you like to create a consent calendar, Mr. Davidoff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, without objection. I move that we place items 5A, 5B, 6C, 6D, 6E, and 8C on consent.
Is there any objection? There being no objection, the items are placed on the consent calendar. Mr. Davidoff.
I move adoption of the items on the consent calendar.
Thank you. We will vote by voice. Everyone, please, make sure your screens are on and place your hand, raise your hand when you say your vote. All those in favor, please say yea.
Yea.
Yea. Nay? Any nays? Seeing and hearing no nays, the yays have it and the items on the consent calendar are adopted. So now we go to reports from the town manager. Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mayor. It's Matt Hart, Town Manager. Good evening, council. Before I begin, I'd like to briefly add to the mayor's comments regarding the passing of Mr. Raymond Shea, Ray Shea. And as the mayor said, he certainly was an institution in our community and a wonderful man and human being. I got a chance to meet Ray many, many years ago, actually on the other side of the bargaining table, when, when he was representing labor at, at the Labor Board. And always found him to be very fair and respectful of the process. When I got here in, in West Hartford, he certainly greeted me warmly and then proceeded to lobby me on, on behalf of long-since-retired members. And I used to occasionally run into Ray at the Elmwood Bakery, which was one of his favorite haunts in town. But he will certainly be missed. He leaves behind a tremendous legacy in my condolences to his friends and family. And now moving into my formal report, which is loaded in board docs and council can review it in more detail when you have time. The first section lists all of the budget meetings that we're planning to hold right now. Actually, from March 11th through April 22nd. And this includes special council meetings, committee is, committee of the whole, special service district meetings on the budget. We're going to have one meeting of the Education Liaison Committee. Recall, that's a joint meeting of the town council and the Board of Education. All of this leading up to the adoption of the budget right now, that's scheduled for April 22nd. And just understand, we may need to modify this based on your needs, based on your actions on the budget. Tomorrow, I will ask Gerida to send this out in the form of a calendar invite. So those of you who use a digital calendar, you can just enter the information directly there. And I'd like to thank Ms. LeBrow and Ms. Reinheimer for helping us to, to put this together. Next item on my report, wanted to talk about our continued reopening. As you know, last week, the governor announced that effective March 19th, he is loosening restrictions on a variety of things, on indoor capacity limits. Will be maintaining the mask mandate, social distancing, and various cleaning protocols for offices and other spaces. We are correspondingly here in West Hartford preparing to open town hall to more in-person transactions beginning in early April. As you may know, right now, we're open only on an appointment basis, although we've had staff working in, in the building for, for several months now, at 50% staffing. We are developing a plan in consultation with the right departments and right staff members. We'll bring it to the executive policy group. I'll have more information to share with you, more specific information to share with you at the next council meeting. And then also in the report, I've listed more of the details from the governor's update, which he provided on, on March 4th. Talks about where capacity limits are being eliminated, and you can see the list here, as well as what is scheduled to reopen on, on April 2nd. We are planning ahead with respect to our summer camps and summer events. Hope to be able to provide more announcements on those, on those soon. So a little bit of an update for you on our reopening and the state's reopening. Just a couple of more things quickly. Very pleased to announce that our golf courses are scheduled to open in, in two days, on March 11th. You know, we're, we're experiencing very good weather right now. So we're planning to open both Rockledge Golf Club and Buena Vista this Thursday, the 11th. We're pretty confident that the snow will have been melted by then. Our grounds crew, under the work of Mr. Nado, they've been making very good progress. Won't be able to use carts for a while, but players will, will be able to, to walk. And on a related point, very, very pleased to announce that Mr. Andrew Killoran, Andrew, will be our next golf pro at Rockledge Golf Club. Andrew, as many of you may know, those of you who play regularly at Rockledge, Andrew has served as the assistant golf pro for many, many years under the tutelage of Rich Crowe, who recently retired. And we think Andrew is an excellent fit for this position and will do a very fine job in his new role, and I'd like to congratulate him on that. And last, but certainly not least, we'd like to welcome Trish Monroe to the town clerk's office. Trish is our new, actually, I think this, this is a typo. I believe she's assistant town clerk. Has previously worked with the town of Avon in a similar capacity. She was an attorney earlier in her career as well. She'll be working closely with the town council on a whole variety of matters, so we're glad to have her on board. That completes my report, Mayor. Happy to take any quick questions council members may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Any questions for the town manager? I don't see any. Again, if you, if I don't see you and you have something to say, please. Okay. Oh, Mr. Davidoff.
I thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to the manager. Will the council be receiving hard copies of your proposed budget? And if so, when will you be receiving?
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. Mr. Hart?
Matt Hart, Town Manager. Thank you for the question. Deputy Mayor? Yes, we're going to provide you with hard copies of both the operating budget, the capital improvement plan, and, and actually, there's a third item, the superintendent's proposed budget as well. Ms. Ryan O'Heimer will reach out to you to see if you want to come by town hall and pick them up or have them dropped off at your, your residence, and we'll make arrangements for you to that effect. And I believe we'll be able to get them out Thursday in advance of, of the Thursday night session. That's our goal right now. And of course, they will be available online as well, but I know many people prefer to have the, the hard copy.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hart. Mr. Davidoff, anything further? Okay. Any other questions? Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Davidoff.
I'll send them there.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Hart? Okay. Again, I don't see any, so I'm going to move on. Okay, Corporation Counsel, Mr. Dodge.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. As a reminder, along with the reopening of town hall, it has been due to the governor's executive orders that have allowed us to meet virtually as a town council. And so when his emergency declaration ends on April 20th, we will have to review how to resume in-person meetings in some fashion. So my office is beginning to look at how to do that safely, anticipating that there may still be some pandemic restrictions in place. And other than that, Madam Mayor, I have no formal report and I'm, and we require no executive session this evening.
Thank you. And thank you all for caring so much that my video was off. Like 20 texts. So sorry, I didn't see it. Appreciate that. Any questions for Corporation Counsel? Okay. I don't see any. Listening for any. I don't hear any. Okay, then we will go to number seven. Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we approve with conditions and application filed on behalf of all the owner of property located at 511 New Park Avenue, also known as West Hartford Place, located within Special Development District, STD 94.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. Mr. Dodge, would you like to explain the conditions of approval?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And Attorney Verano, I believe, shared these with the entire council a few moments ago by email. And as advertised, the new conditions of approval would delete the restriction on liquor sales on the site that were in the previous conditions and replace that. and replace that with a new condition that the sale of alcoholic liquor under a grocery beer liquor permit as defined under the general statutes and by the Liquor Control Division of DCP, uh, would be permitted on the site. Uh, fairly straightforward, Madam Mayor, but I'm happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge. Any questions for Corporation Counsel on this? I don't see any. I don't hear any. Okay, uh, we can, um, I, I think, um, well, we can go to any comments from Council. Actually, this is the time we debate. I'm not sure there will be much debate, but does anybody have any comments? Uh, we can actually go through an alphabetical, we can do reverse alphabetical order, uh, and, uh, you can just say, I'm good, or whatever. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, uh, Madam Mayor. I have, uh, no comments. Thank you to the applicant for the investment in the town.
Thank you. Mr. Wenigrad?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. No comments other than to say that I support this, uh, uh, this change. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Sweeney?
No comment. Again, just appreciate, uh, the investment in the town. Thank you. Thank you for your application.
This is scary. I don't have them written down. Ms. Kerrigan, I may miss somebody. If I do, I apologize.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Mayor. Uh, yes, I'll be supporting this application and I thank the applicant as well for their investment.
Thank you. Uh, uh, Mr. Gold?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, uh, no comment except to say I appreciate Attorney Wise's presentation and his brevity, uh, his thoroughness as well, uh, and thank you for the investment in the town by the applicant.
Thank you. Ms. Fay?
Thank you, Mayor Cantor. Through you, uh, I will be supporting this application as well. I, I thought the presentation was great, to the point, and I really can't see any reason to stand in the way of Aldi bringing beer, uh, to the grocery store when all the others in town are allowed to. So I definitely will support this application. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Fay. Mr. Davidoff?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So between the public hearing and the start of this meeting, I was able to Google the Town Council minutes of April 12th, 1994. Just want to let everyone know for the record, there were remaining minutes that were 60 pages long. And the hearing was, uh, quite, quite contentious on different, uh, points of all the conditions that were finally adopted. And as was rightly pointed out in our conditions of approval tonight, in Section 10, it said liquor sales are prohibited. Unfortunately, time did not permit me to get into that part of the discussion, but I'm glad that we moved forward in about 27 years now to, uh, remove that particular prohibition. And, uh, hopefully, uh, attorney wise, this sort of brought back some recollection of that very long evening for you. So this evening, it's a much shorter version, and I will be supporting this, uh, this motion this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. Thanks for the history. Uh, and thank you, Ms. Kerrigan, for asking the question. Jarredol us a little. Uh, Ms. Blanks?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have any questions, only a comment. I'd like to thank the applicant for bringing this forward. And also thank the applicant for being a great community partner in our power of town, and I will also be supporting this.
Thank you, Ms. Blanks. And I would just like to echo my colleague's comments, uh, and, uh, and say, you know, time has, has changed and it is, it is time, uh, to offer the same benefits of, of all, uh, the grocery stores. And, um, Aldi is an incredible resource for our community. And, uh, we're, we're grateful for your investment, um, and for bringing this forward. And we're happy to move it forward for you and so you can get these, be ready for your reopening and, and have your products on the shelf. Uh, so now we will go, um, Ms. LeBrow, we will go for a roll call. So we'll now go in medical order and roll calling you. Thank you.
Ms. Blanks?
Yes.
Ms. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Davidoff?
Yes.
Ms. Fay?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Ms. Kerrigan? Ms. Kerrigan? I can't, well, I'll go to the next. Uh, Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Wenigrad?
Yes.
And Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Kerrigan? She's on mute. Ms. Kerrigan is on mute.
Madam Mayor, can I suggest that perhaps we leave this vote open? Uh, we can come back to, uh, Ms. Kerrigan if she, uh, is able to resolve her technical issues.
Exactly what I was going to say. Okay, we will leave the vote open and circle back after the next agenda item. Uh, or, or if you can, uh, give me a text, Beth, when you're ready, um, I can, uh, I can. All right, uh, number eight, Mr. Davidoff. Oh, I'm sorry. Hello? Yeah, well, right, we're leaving it open. I'm sorry. Okay, number eight, Mr. Davidoff.
Uh, number eight is an introduction of the 2021-22 fiscal year budget proposed by the Town Manager Superintendent of Schools.
Okay, um, I think, uh, Ms. Kerrigan is now ready to vote on number seven. Ms. Kerrigan? I'm sorry, did, did, Ms. Kerrigan? Okay, we will continue with number eight. Um, uh, Mr. Hart, I understand that, uh, you are postponing the introduction of the budget and I, I will go to you for explanation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Matt Hart, Town Manager. Yes, that is my, my recommendation. Had been planning to present the budget this evening, but now I would like to do that Thursday evening. We do have plenty of, of time and, uh, and room within the schedule in order to accommodate that. The primary reason behind my request, as you know, the Congress, Congress right now is, is, uh, is considering, and, and the House will be meeting again tomorrow on the American Rescue Plan, which will include a significant municipal aid component. And I would like to be able to provide the council with, uh, with more information regarding the details of that plan in my presentation on Thursday, Thursday evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hart. Uh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. We will, now would you like to make the motion?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, without objection, I move that we postpone the introduction of the 2021-2022 fiscal year budget as proposed by the Town Manager Superintendent of Schools until a special meeting of the Town Council at 6:30 on March 11th, 2021.
Is there any objection? Oh, Ms. Verano, did you have a comment? Attorney Verano? No?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, sorry. I'm sorry. I also had a hand up. Sorry about that. Okay. Uh, is there any objection, uh, for the, to the, uh, motion? Okay. Seeing no objection, um, the motion is adopted. And back to you, Ms. Kerrigan. Uh, any, any, uh, voice on, uh, item number seven? Okay, uh, we will go to, uh, 8B. Mr. Davidoff?
An ordinance temporarily expand, extending the expansion of outdoor activities.
Mr. Hart, uh, would you like to briefly explain the purpose of this ordinance?
Matt Hart, Town Manager, I'd be happy to do that, Mayor. Thank you. So as the deputy mayor in, in his, uh, motion explained, we're, we're providing with a proposed ordinance that would allow the town to temporarily extend the expansion of outdoor activities if, if needed. As the council is well aware, uh, last year, the governor temporarily modified certain state and local legislation in order to expand both outdoor dining and outdoor retail during the course of the pandemic. Uh, under, under the state's rules, the town, as you'll recall, we had a pretty expansive program here in the center, in Blueback Square and elsewhere around town. We allowed our restaurants and retailers to expand into sidewalks and roadways, our, our public right of way. And they created some new, we, we helped create. It was very much a partnership between the town and our, uh, our private restaurants and retailers. We created some outdoor dining areas along LaSalle, Farmington Avenue, and a portion of South Main and in Blueback Square as well. And really, it was a tremendous experience here in, in West Hartford last summer. The governor's emergency declaration ends or expires on, uh, April 20th. We are hearing, you know, there's, there's probably a strong possibility that the rules that the state, either the governor or potentially the legislature will continue those rules through 2021. But in the event that that does not happen, we want to be prepared here in West Hartford and at the local level. So the proposed ordinance would continue the current, the current outdoor dining and retail program through the end of this calendar year only. And the ordinance, there's also a section that would require me, working with the staff team, to present to you with a proposed ordinance that would expand our current outdoor dining and retail program uh, beyond its, its current configuration, and I would need to present that to you by October 1st of, of this year. I'd like to thank Corporation Counsel's Office and Mr. DuMay, our Town Planner, for their excellent work in, in preparing this draft. And essentially, if you, uh, if you approve this through your normal process, we'll be able to replicate what we had in 2020 and 2021. I'll pause there, Mayor. Um, and I assume you'll reserve questions for next time.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hart. So we make the motion. Well, the discussion will be at the next meeting, but actually, right now, I will, I'm going to go to Ms. Kerrigan. I understand she had audio issues and now they've been corrected to vote on item number seven on the Aldi application. You can just say yea, uh, Ms. Kerrigan. Okay, all right. The, the vote is closed and the motion has passed unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kerrigan. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, and now we are back to motion, um, 8B, uh, Mr. Davidoff. Can you make the motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Without objection, I make a motion to refer to the Town Planner and Zoning Commission TPZ and the Capital Region Council of Governments Prague, the ordinance temporarily extending the expansion of outdoor activities and to schedule the ordinance for public hearing for 7:00 PM on April 15th, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. Uh, is there an objection, any objection? If somebody's not on mute and there's a lot of background noise, so if you're not on mute, could you, if you're not speaking, could you please turn your, thank you. Uh, hearing no objection, the motion is adopted. Uh, then we will now, actually, we're almost, almost done. Uh, we're going to go to announcements and, um, I, I didn't, uh, state the, the COVID data in the beginning of, um, the meeting, which I normally do, and I apologize for that. Um, I, I wanted to mention that there are, according to CDC website, they vary slightly, so I want to make sure. At 29.2 cases of COVID, uh, 526,000 deaths from COVID. Uh, and they have an updated number on vaccinations. 93.7 million vaccines have been, uh, distributed. Um, and, I mean, have been, um, uh, actually given. Um, 116 million vaccine doses have been distributed to pharmacies and, uh, health centers and, um, and municipalities around, around the country. So 18.1% of the population right now is vaccinated. It does vary by state. Uh, and as you know, Connecticut is, is doing, uh, well in this category. Um, I also want to, uh, welcome Trish, Trish Monroe to the team. I had the chance to briefly meet her and I'm, I'm very excited to have her and I'm very grateful for the support. Um, I know SE is, um, really appreciative of that. Uh, oh no, my announcement just went away. Hold on. Okay, uh, Spring Greenhouse Show, Elizabeth Parks Conservancy Spring Greenhouse Show, uh, continues this weekend featuring a spectacular array of spring bulbs and plants. I actually walked by there last weekend and it was really beautiful and, um, and they were being very safe, but it was a steady lineup of people to, to look. So, um, the show is, it's really hard for me to read this. The show is, uh, um, going to be from 9:00 to 2:00 on Saturday, March, uh, I can't, half of this is off and it keeps going off. I'm sorry, 10:00 to 4:00 on Friday, March 12th, uh, and 9:00 to 2:00 on Saturday, March 13th. Uh, bulbs and plants can maybe be purchased on that day and, um, are for sale by credit card only. Visitors are asked to bring their own trays, boxes, or carts to carry away their plant purchases. Uh, Hartford and West Hartford Interfaith One Year Commemoration of the Pandemic. Faith organizations and elected officials in Hartford and West Hartford are coming together virtually on this weekend, on Sunday, March 24th, at 4:00 PM to commemorate the one-year anniversary of the pandemic. Uh, we join for this 45-minute service with area faith organization, elected officials, uh, that will be held, uh, this ceremony service that will be held via Zoom includes music, prayer, and a candlelight. Pre-registration is required to attend. For more information on details, how to watch the service, go to, and I'll repeat it twice, www.cbiict.org/calender. Again, that is www.cbiict.org/calender. It is also on our town website and on board docs. A Taste of Ireland to Go Dinner Box and Virtual Show. This Patrick's Day might not be the traditional gathering that we do, um, but we can still celebrate in the comfort of your own home, March 20th, 2021. The museum's first-ever virtual Taste of Ireland to Go. The price is $60 and go to the Noah Webster House to, uh, register and get more information. Um, this event includes a home-cooked dinner box that serves four to six people um, and has stout steak pie and accompaniments and mesmerizing dance by Mulcahy Academy of Irish Dance and Blue Sky Pipes and Drums. I think I did mention it last time as well. And, uh, I think that's all I had. Are there any other? I know, um, actually, I, I know Mr. Sweeney, uh, also has a memory to, uh, to reflect on. Uh, Mr. Sweeney?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, uh, I wanted to take an opportunity to, uh, acknowledge the passing of a legal stalwart in, uh, West Hartford, uh, with the passing of, uh, the Honorable Francis Owen Egan. Uh, yeah, as, as most folk people know, the Egan family is a large family in town. Uh, I grew up with, uh, his grandkids, all, uh, that, a lot of them, 12 of them here in, in town. Uh, I know that, uh, Mr. Davidoff is also close, uh, with the Egan family. Um, as we all know, that our appropriate judge is, uh, Owen Egan, one of his sons. Uh, but, uh, just to reflect on this, this man's life, uh, he served, uh, our country honorably in, uh, in Korea, in the US Air Force. Uh, but, uh, his, uh, the pinnacle of his career, I think, was serving our country as a US magistrate judge, uh, for 20 years. Um, he went on to, uh, become a law school professor, um, but I think as the Egan family would proudly acknowledge the most, I think the biggest thing he was, was a grandfather to so many, to his large family um, and to that family that has given so much to our community. And I just wanted to acknowledge that because, uh, uh, he was, he was a titan in this community. His family has, uh, continued to take care of people and, uh, been close to a lot of people here today with us. Uh, and just wanted to acknowledge, uh, the, the passing of, uh, of Judge Egan. Um, and, uh, you know, a great life that was lived here in town. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. And at the beginning, uh, between, um, Ray and, and Judge Egan, they're really remarkable, remarkable men and, um, and, and incredible contributors to our community and an inspiration.
And great Irishman.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. So happy St. Patrick's Day. We can all remember and honor them. So any other comments or questions, uh, or, uh, announcements, sorry? All right. Seeing none, I, uh, make a motion to adjourn. Are there any objections? Seeing no objections, the motion is passed and we are adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.